Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Here.
Commissioner Samenski?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Weiner?
Here.
Commissioner McBride?
Here.
Commissioner Yoder?
Here.
Chair Whitliff?
Here, thank you.
Next, approval of agenda, at this time the planning commission can't take action to approve the October 3rd, 2019 agenda.
Make the motion.
Motion by Bob, second by...
Wait, can we add that we're getting the presentation to the agenda? Because I don't see that on the agenda.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, the public hearing is the presentation.
Public hearing is that presentation.
Oh, it just didn't show the address, excuse me. Okay, sorry, Bob.
Second, did you second?
I'll second.
Discussion, none, please take role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samenski?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you.
Approval of minutes, at this time the planning commission can't take action to approve the September 5th, 2019 meeting minutes. There are motion.
I'll make a motion, we approved the minutes, that's right.
Motion by Marlene, second by Mick. Discussion, none, please take role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samenski?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you.
Public hearing, uh, public hearing for Northwest Properties is at 70 Arthur Street. I will open the public hearing. Applicant should, uh, present.
Mind if I stare at my...
No, that's fine.
Say a little bit more from the PowerPoint. I want to thank the commission and the city staff for allowing me the opportunity to present for 70 Arthur Street tonight. I'm Ryan Fitzsimmons and I represent Northwest Properties. And with my, um, partners from Meds Cafe, uh, we're looking to get a special use permit for 70 Arthur Street, uh, more probably commonly, uh, known as the North Shore Marine and RV, um, building. And we think it's important that you kinda get to know us a little bit, uh, through the application process, um, as well. Um, I'm a local property owner, uh, here, we have our second home on, uh, 209 St. Mary's Street where my mother currently lives with my two youngest brothers. Um, I've lived on and off in Manistee for the past, uh, six or seven years. And actually, next week, Wednesday is my fourth year anniversary with my wife where, um, we got engaged at Vogue Theater, I proposed in front of the five patrons there, uh, who gave us a standing ovation, uh, at the showing of The Good Dinosaur, I believe. And, uh, and then, uh, we were married at the courthouse, uh, not too long after that. Uh, I currently owner run three businesses, including an online retail store. Uh, we buy and sell automation equipment, or automation controls, so we go to the big three, um, uh, or their subsidiaries and purchase, um, any sort of controls or electronics and then we resell them in different markets all across the, the world. And so it's kind of a green recycling business. So that's primarily my, uh, background, um, in that it's important that, uh, you know, that I'm involved in retail. And then kinda how we got into this, this business, I think it's important for everybody to know too, um, cannabinoids, um, have helped, uh, a number of my family members with, uh, health issues. My mom battled, uh, breast cancer, uh, a couple of years back. And my eighteen-year-old brother who lives in, uh, our second home here in Manistee has autism. And, um, CBD is one of the, uh, the most helpful things for him as far as, um, dealing with anxiety or, uh, hyperactivity. And so that's really how we kinda stumbled into this, um, uh, business and, um, made the decision to go forward with, um, or, or me going forward with this decision to partner, uh, with Meds Cafe. So my partner, uh, Michael Atkins, um, is here from, uh, Meds Cafe tonight. They, uh, him and his partner Scott Schroeder, uh, own and operate, uh, Medical Profiling Center in Roger City, Michigan. And the same thing for them, uh, they've both had family members, um, use cannabinoids to get through, uh, a number of, uh, health issues. Um, Michael's younger brother has cerebral palsy and, uh, so they use exclusively to help him with his seizures which have since stopped. Both Michael and Scott, um, are big into giving back to their hometown community. Uh, they sponsor city cleanups, um, they donate school supplies for high school and middle school students in need, um, and, uh, they give quite a bit to the local parks up there as well. Um, our partner Scott, uh, has owned a restaurant for the last nine years, uh, up in Roger City and he hel- uh, he holds a Class C liquor license for the past five years with no violations, uh, warnings, write-ups, um, during that period. All three of us are in, um, uh, in good standing where we have no open zoning violations or, uh, open or prior building safety violations. We have no passed due bills or tax liens within any jurisdiction, um, and no, uh, passed due taxes at any level as well. We all have previous experience in the retail industry, uh, and are one of the few applicants that currently own and run a medical profiling center. We think it's really important, especially with this, um, line of business, um, that we have a positive influence within the, the Manistee community. So in order for us to do that, we came up with some action steps, uh, that we would do, uh, with, with the property. In addition to the, the excise tax with the municipality ends up getting about 1.5% of, of all sales by the business, w- we would double that where we would look to donate an additional 1.5% of all our sales to local charities and organizations through a community outreach liaison, which, uh, I'm hoping will be, uh, my mother who's, uh, here tonight. We thought it's a, uh, a good way, and, and Mike and Scott, uh, to give back to the communities that, that we're taking, uh, a part of. We're gonna look to, uh, at 70 Arthur, look to renovate and continue to enhance the property with, uh, positive environmental and aesthetic goals in mind while using, uh, local contractors. Uh, we're looking to create local jobs with, uh, livable wages, uh, minimum wage of fifteen dollars an hour for, um, employees. Um, we utilize safety compliance testing facilities, um, we've established, um, a banking relationships, um, secure transport and the latest in physical and cybersecurity to provide a safe environment for employees, patrons and neighbors. We look to develop relationships and provide immediate access to all local and state law enforcement. We engage and educate, uh, community members on the proper uses of cannabis and cannabinoids. Um, the important thing for us, yeah, even as, uh, as we're looking to go for a recreational license, that we look to treat customers as, as patients and that was, it's really the foundation of why Mike and Scott started the, the business, um, with the goal is really to improve, um, health and lifestyle. Um, and as maybe some of you know, uh, why everyone is looking to, not maybe everyone, but most are looking to get the recreational, um, retail, uh, license because medical will essentially be phased out over the next two, two years or so. But it, for us, it's, uh, really important to continue to provide that, that medical-like environment, uh, for all, all customers. Um, we only want to offer the, the best, um, products while sourcing the vast majority through our own, um, licensed grow facilities, so, um, uh, it's still currently going on, but definitely, uh, a month or so back, there was essentially a, a shortage of, of, of all product, almost all product on the market. So it's really important, I think, for businesses going in that they can control their own supply and we're, uh, able to do that, um, through our own licensed grows moving forward. We also want to provide free delivery to seniors, veterans, or, uh, anyone with disabilities. Establish consistent and direct channels of communication with local residents, um, utilize, uh, carbon filtration to mitigate any potential odors, uh, minimize light and noise, uh, pollution and, um, be active members and participants in, uh, our local government. And we've tried to make, uh, I think we've been to half dozen of these meetings, I think so far, and we got to watch everyone else present, um, prior to it, which was nice. Let's see. Oh, so the building design and neighborhood impact, um, we're looking, uh, es- essentially, you look through the contracts, we're leasing out the front retail space, um, initially, uh, but are able to make full site improvements. We're gonna do a complete renovation of that, uh, front retail building, um, and, and clean up the property. This includes landscaping and the addition of, um, of the site plan, um, at least one rain garden. And we're looking, we will adhere to a hundred percent of all planning department, um, or commission recommendations. Plans will significantly, uh, these plans will significantly increase the property value, thus raising, um, property, uh, taxes on the parcel in addition to when we purchase, uh, exercise our, um, buyout option on, on the property, that would also increase property taxes significantly. Uh, and again, we'll hire local contractors to maintain the property. Oh, we had the, the Spicer Group, um, Pat Bentley, uh, was a project surveyor, he could not be here tonight because they had their quarterly meeting in St. John's, um, so he was not here to answer questions. So, um, we talked for about an hour on the, the phone today and hopefully I'll be able to answer as many questions as I can on the, the site plan, but I defer to Pat a little bit, um, as his, uh, area of expertise. On the PowerPoint, there's an example of, I know signage is very important, um, for you guys and, and essentially it's Meds Cafe and we utilize a, a green cross, um, which is pretty common with dispensaries all across the country. And that, that's not included in, well unless you're looking at the, the PowerPoint, um, that's within the, the PowerPoint there. So again, the, the interior will be, uh, completely, um, gutted and, um, we're hiring a, a local interior designer to kinda, uh, to go through and, uh, I'll tell you, you'll be able to see in a, in a couple pages. Um, we're retaining, um, something really cool about the, the site is that the Manistee Lumber Company, it must be back in the early nineteen hundreds, uh, had a, a vault, um, with about two and a half feet thick walls on, on every side that we'll retain at the property. And it's supported by what looks like huge tree stumps in the, uh, in the basement. So there's, there's a lot of cool features that we'll try to retain in the, the building. Uh, but also for added security, although we do, um, bank and don't, um, for, Mike and Scott, um, have banking relationships set up, so there's not gonna be a high amount of, uh, cash or anything on the, the premises. In the PowerPoint, I have, uh, the current building layouts and then the, the new building layout, which is, um, probably, uh, important. It's hard to see, the long corridor on the left would be, um, the entrance on the east and west side. The, um, west side has, um, uh, ADS access, um, and so checking would be on the, the east side, uh, of that long corridor there. In, in the, what's basically, I can't point at it, but the, the long, um, the, the large piece would be the retail space, um, that's the most square footage there in the picture and connected to that is the vault. And then behind you have some offices and secured rooms for employees, uh, and off to the side downstairs access down into the, the basement. A- a- and then, um, th- there's a picture a- a- as well, as far as, um, what we're looking to do to freshen up the inside of the, the property with the decor. Oh, I was gonna have you throw up the site plan or have, uh, um, had talk about it or I'll try to answer any questions.
It's in everyone's packet, so, um, the planning commission has reviewed it thoroughly. Do you wanna look at the one that I have for?
If, yeah, yeah, if there's any questions on it, I'll try to...
Thanks. Yeah. Are you ready for the, uh, city staff recommendations and comments, or does the planning commission have any questions?
Is there, yeah, if there's any questions. Go ahead.
Oh, uh, you mentioned you haven't applied for a license, state license yet, for recreational?
We already hold a, a medical license, or my, my partner's, yeah.
Yes or no?
Have we applied?
Yes.
No, because we already hold a medical license.
Yeah, I see, that's what I mean.
So in recreational, we can't apply for until November 1st.
November 1st, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
All right, the license you have here is a provisioning center.
Yeah, it's, yeah, the, uh, yeah, the medical that...
And then now you have to go back and specify?
No, it's actually, we get, um, or Martin's partner Scott, um, like an expedited process, so instead of taking the full ninety days to get a, another license, any license they want moving forward is right around thirty days or less.
Because you have the...
Because you already have a medical license. And you must have a medical in order to operate a recreational for the next two years.
Yeah, but they didn't, they won't start till November 1st, as I understand it, giving a recreational.
That is correct.
And then once you have your recreational, you can sell to anyone?
Twenty-one and over.
I mean, twenty-one and over. But if you only have a medical, you can only sell to people that have a medical card.
That is correct. Yep, and then the only difference is the eighteen to twenty-one, if you have a medical card, you can go to a medical profiling center. And, uh, where recreational, you know, there's, there's no, uh, you know, under twenty-one that has access.
And you anticipate the medical marijuana facilities being gone in two years and all going to recreational?
Yeah, that's the, that's the, the tr- the trend as far as, currently you have, um, medical marijuana cardholders take up about, uh, 2.7% of the, the population. And it wouldn't necessarily make sense when you have access to, uh, the, the percentage conservatively is about seventeen percent of the population, like self-reported. So in states where, um, uh, it's, it's legalized, um, you'll see that almost twenty-five percent self-report that they're users.
Yeah.
Of, you know, marijuana, uh, cannabinoids. So it doesn't make sense, uh, as far as the business goes beyond these two years, once the state allows you to just go for a recreational license.
Right, right.
Why you would, why you would narrow...
Yeah.
Stuff down to just that 2.7%.
Now, you said above twenty-one is above and everything else, now you said you're gonna phase out the medical. Now, if somebody under twenty-one doctors, would there be prescriptions for that? Would that still go through your business or what?
Well, so, um, what, what you can do is you can stack, uh, a medical and a recreational license at the, the same facility. So it is an option for us to, to stack both at 70 Arthur Street through the state. But currently, our, our plans are not, um, to, there'll be others, uh, that'll be able to serve, um, the medical community for those eighteen to twenty-one, he- here on Arthur Street. Um, and we would retain our medical license in, in Roger City. Um, and then through that medical license, get the recreational license here.
So in that case, just because a lot of, or a couple of them came up and said they're gonna apply for medical because they're giving them easier, they're not gonna be automatically opened up to recreational?
No, no, it's a, a different...
A whole different project.
Yeah, whole, whole different process. Yeah, so you, you would have to be up and running with your medical profiling center in order to then go for your recreational license, which is why a number of the applicants are looking to get their...
Yeah.
Medical...
Yeah.
Center up and running first, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah, go ahead, anybody that has, you can go ahead.
Purchased this, or are you on a spec?
No, so I s- I set it up, uh, nicely for myself. Um, so I have a two-year lease, um, with the, the current owner there with, um, essentially it's a, a, a purchase option, uh, within that, that two years. And the only reason I did it is because I'm personally financing the building myself, currently. So I gave myself a little bit of time to liquidate some assets and some things.
All right.
Yes, and forgive me, I'm not reading this diagram very well.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I thought you said by the new building layout, the entrance will run east and west.
Well, so I'm, uh, when I was, so not, uh, talking about, are you talking specifically just about the, the retail space?
Yes.
So the entrance into the building, okay, yeah, yeah.
Yes. So, is the entrance on the north side of the building?
So there's a, there's an entrance that would be, um, coming from the street or, or sidewalk area that you could, uh, access. And then on the backside of the building where the parking is, that's where your ADS would be.
Oh, okay.
Access, so then we could get traffic from e- either way.
Yeah, so on the south side is that hallway.
Exactly, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, wh- how many employees do you anticipate having?
So this, this may be a question, uh, for Michael, and it depends on the, the number that come in. I think Michael currently in Roger City with a...
We have about five old timers, two part timers. In our town, there's only two thousand people, I think. So I would guess ten plus, ten, fourteen possibly?
Yeah, that's what I mean, if we permit, or if all you ten people that applied come in and everybody's looking at five to ten people, I don't know where you're gonna get a hundred and forty people. There's health warning signs all over town, I don't know.
And, and the follow-on question, do you have a grow facility already?
So they're, um, municipally, uh...
Ordinance approved.
Ordinance approved and then, um...
Should be up and running in, I think realistically, three months. So possibly by the time we can open up here, we should already have our product ready to go in, so, uh, there's been a big shortage around the state.
Right, so, but you will be self-provisioned?
Yeah.
Is that in Roger City?
It is, yes, it's my hometown.
The only way to go.
Yeah.
Grow your own.
Yeah, that's the truth. Any other questions? Bob?
Nope.
Roger, Marlene?
No, we're good, uh, we're good.
Shelley?
It's good, Bob.
Nothing? Thank you.
We have recommendations, if you're ready for those now.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Sure. All right, so, um, the planning department recommends that regarding your rain garden, um, to add it to the north side of the parcel where the green space is currently, um, just down the large slope from the neighboring north parcel. The dumpster currently, um, we recommend rotating, so, um, to facilitate a connection to the south parcel, um, which is the third, um, recommendation to facilitate connections to the neighboring parcel to the south with a, um, an access drive that would connect, um, to the other parcel and other, um, two parcels specifically. So, um, to rotate the dumpster, um, would be a ninety-degree, um, I guess southeast turn. Um, the rain garden to the north green space would be, um, just currently where the green space is and then facilitating a connection to neighboring parcel to the south, but with a twenty-four foot wide, um, access road. Those are our recommendations from the planning department and, uh, the fire department stipulates, um, adding a fire suppression system and a Knox box. And then lastly, the public, uh, works department has recommended, uh, to, uh, relook at the curb cuts so that they meet commercial standards for construction and dimensions. Um, the property sheet drains surface water, um, seems to be to the south and east. Um, the plan needs to sh- uh, specifically show the proposed stormwater conveyance. So those are the, um, site-specific recommendations and stipulations. Um, all other special use permits, um, are to include the following, um, stipulations that were, uh, made apparent by the, uh, planning commission, including, um, if the parcel is sold, the special use permit must go with the parcel. Um, all work must be completed as required. Site plans, uh, must be developed to the plan specifications. Existing pole signs must be removed. All site plans using the word proposed must be changed to install. Uh, sites with parking changes must change parking cli- calculations and resubmit for approval to the planning department as a non-substantial change. Um, the interconnections to neighboring parcels via easements on the west and east side of parcel in agreements written in a deed which allow for movement across property lines. Site plans must be resubmitted for parcels affected showcasing said connections for this vehicular movement. Soil erosion permits are required through Manistee County being within, uh, five hundred feet of a water body. All parcels to have fire suppression system as noted, all parcels must have a Knox box in the building for fire department entrance. Special use permit is valid for two years as determined by the planning commission. Um, signed permits are required through the planning department with zoning approval finalized by a planning commissioner agreement. Um, applicant must schedule an appointment when work is completed for zoning administration approval. And lastly, provide digital CAD files and site plans to the planning department and surveys to the register of deeds. Um, these are the stipulations for all, um, marijuana businesses, so, um, those will be included with 70 Arthur as well. Um, finally, um, it's been known that each applicant, um, has to have the decision tabled until the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, so, um, this will be brought up again, um, on the first meeting of November to either grant or deny this special use permit to give time to, um, consider the presentation as well as to have the same, um, standards for, uh, set from other applicants. Um, it's the fairness and only way that the planning commission, um, deems to move forward. So, those are the stipulations as well as recommendations from the planning department and other departments in, in town.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
Um, that's a fairly large parcel...
Mm-hmm.
That you're looking at.
Yeah.
Um, do you have plans beyond this initial building?
Um, yeah, um, well, yeah, depending, um, w- we talked about a, a whole bunch of different ideas, um, after, uh, we would purchase the property so that the building right behind it is known as the, the Carriage House. Um, so, w- we thought that, uh, it c- it could be a, possibly like a convenience store. Uh, it, it could also just be, uh, depending on what we have going on there for employees and things like that, w- you could finish up the, upstairs for an apartment or a loft. Um, there's a lot of different, um, the, the back pole building, um, would definitely just be storage, um, for us, I think, in, in, in the long run. We had thought maybe initially, because there's a limited number of the recreational license, um, a- available that, that we could have potentially a micro business, w- which would mean that we'd have a small grow, um, a processing facility which would maybe be that Carriage House middle building and upfront, but if you have any interest in, um, uh, another marijuana business of, of any sort, uh, you can't open a micro business. Um, so we had, put, early on, put in the plan that those buildings may be used for that. Um, without that, the, it, they'll definitely be put to good use and be renovated and, uh, things along those lines. I know, um, there was talk, um, well, a lot of talk, um, that eventually the railroad, uh, would be replaced with a walking or, or biking path or things like that, so we would put things in, uh, to allow, uh, you know, bike racks and, and that, the landscaping on the, what is the north east side of the property, are the right...
The west side.
On the west side, uh, of the, of the property to facilitate something like that and, and look to be, um, active in getting that thirty, forty-plus year goal maybe, um, put in place as far as getting that, uh, w- we would help donate or, or contribute to, to having that happen as well.
Any other questions? Arlene? Nick?
Nope.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Um, I will now open the, uh, hearing for public comment. Anybody have, anybody would like to, uh, speak on this, please approach the podium, name an address and you have five minutes. Done?
No.
Okay, thank you. And we'll close the public hearing. Uh, next, public comments on agenda-related, related items. Um, so if anybody has any comments on the agenda, please approach the podium. Name an address, please, five minutes. And I will read this, uh, comment. All comments and handouts from the speaker at the podium will go through the chair. Also, there will not be any interaction between the podium and audience. Rules cannot be followed. Chair can terminate this portion of the meeting. Thank you. Uh, new business? We have none? Old business? 461 Fifth Street, special permit extension request.
Okay, I'll read the memo and, um, if there's any questions, um, the applicant, uh, the grantee of the special use permit init- uh, is here to answer any of those questions. So, special use permit was approved on October 4th, 2018 for a bed and breakfast at 461 Fifth Street. The permit has not been fulfilled as of yet and the grantee is requesting an extension on this permit. The following documents were included in your packet, including a copy of the special use permit from October 4th, 2018 and a copy of the planning commission resolution, case number PC dash 2018 dash oh... and a copy of the planning commission resolution, case number PC dash two thousand eighteen dash oh nine. Uh, the grantee, like I said, is in attendance and is more than happy to answer any questions the planning commission may have, um, about this special use permit extension.
Okay, thank you. Uh, would the grantee please approach the podium for questions? If, if there are any? Okay, go ahead.
Um, I guess my first question is, what has been completed and what hasn't been? Why are you needing an extension?
Um, I'm needing an extension because my restoration loan was contingent upon the sale of my home which just sold in mid-June, so I've only had really four months to, you know, with my restoration loan, so, um, it's gonna take.
So you won't be able to open bed and breakfast at all this summer?
No, no, not at all. No, I'm under construction.
What is the extension length of time for?
Do you have a, a per?
One year.
From today, then?
A year would be great. Probably won't need a year, but a year would be nice.
I mean, one year from today, Mark. I mean, one year from today, correct? Correct, okay.
What so far has been completed on the building at all?
Not much. Um, changed out the bathroom. Um, working on the foundation and, and, no, starting in the basement, really, did a little bit of landscaping in the back. But really just recently obtained that restoration loan, so, not a lot.
Have you obtained the contractors for the work or, uh, has that portion been resolved? So you have the workers to be able to complete the, the work that needs to be done?
I have a few people, um, working on bids. Seems to be a shortage of contractors that like to show up here, so it's been a struggle.
Yeah.
Plus I didn't have my, you know, my loan, so I didn't wanna get people all excited and then not be able to pay them, so.
I'm assuming this is more than handyman work as well, right?
Ee, oh, yeah, yeah, there's a, there's a few biggies in there.
So is this plumbing, electrical, the, the whole shot?
Some, some of each, yeah.
And with, um, you would, you expect this to be all wrapped up by next year at this time?
I hope so, yes. I really need it to be, so, depending on contractors and if people show up and, you know.
Well, if it's not your fault, we can't blame you. I mean, you know, we can't get the contractors.
It's been a struggle.
I know what it's like, yeah.
Takes a long time.
Yeah, it does, yeah, it does. They book you, it's just not right now. They'll book you six months out.
Oh, yes, I'm on the list for the Olins.
Oh, John, yeah, I know.
For Top of the Town Painting.
Oh, no, or, yeah.
I'm on the list for August.
Yeah.
Of next year, right.
I was just gonna say August.
It's a little late to start a big project.
Yeah, so, well, there you go.
Right.
That's right for Dave.
August, next year.
He's a, he's a very busy person. He's got three projects going in Luddington right now.
Does he? That's what I mean, them guys are, uh, yeah, they're working pretty hard. I'd say like a year.
A year.
What kind, what type of renovations are you wanting an extension on? You seem kind of vague, a little of this, a little of that. What is, what is the thing that, uh, you need, really need the extension for?
Um, well, the porch is kind of the crown jewel of the home, you know, as far as the outside goes. Um, and those guys are still working on a bid for me, 'cause that's gonna need to be.
Levelled.
Leveled and, and rail completely redone. There's a roof that needs to be redone on the porch, um, some electrical, um.
Yeah, whatever.
I'm adding sconces up the stairway, so that's gonna need, you know, that's what they're doing. Um, to add in that new electrical, adding a few bathrooms, and I think that was in my site plan, um, you know. And I do have a bid on that, but it's a lot of big stuff.
Yeah, is, is the garage also included in that?
Uh, that'll be phase two, yeah. I think I'll get up and running and then later add that carriage house garage, yeah.
Now, is that your?
But I won't need that to be open.
You redoing the kitchen also in this project?
Not really, I mean, I'll upgrade, but I'm not gonna got it. It's, it will be, it will be okay. It's usable the way it is.
What are you doing in the backyard right now?
In where?
The backyard, I know some machine.
The backyard? Just some landscaping. I put in a, a little patio with a, a little fire pit, yeah.
Did you come up with a design for the parking, off-street parking?
Yes, that was in the.
Yeah, the parking, it, that's all on my site plan, yeah. That'll have to be in the spring too. You know, the dumpster.
The, uh, planning department has a recommendation, if, um, we, uh, recommend to extend the permit until, uh, December thirty-first, uh, two thousand twenty. Um, so it's a congruent, um, whole, uh, year of, plus a little bit of time so that, um, by the end of two thousand twenty, the permit, uh, will be valid for what is something that we recommend, so.
Yeah, that's, sounds like a plan. I'll go for that.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
No? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we need a motion to, uh, approve that, your extension?
Motion by Mick to extend the special use to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Second by Bob. Discussion, please take role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Smanzki?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride? Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlock?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Next, two, two forty Arthur Street, special use permit decision.
Um, we've heard the presentation from two forty Arthur, um, last meeting, and it's been adequate enough time to come to a decision. Um, we have come up with stipulations, as with all other special use permits, to include the following as well as some site-specific stipulations. Um, are there any discussion points from the planning commission before we get into that, or any questions, or are we ready to hear those?
Yes. Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Please?
So, as with all other special use permits in the marijuana sales overlay district, um, this parcel is to include the following for special use permit granting. Um, if parcel is sold, the special use permit must go with the parcel. All work must be completed as required. Um, site must be developed to plan specifications. Existing pole signs must be removed. All site plans using the word proposed must be changed to install. Sites with parking space changes must change parking calculations and resubmit for approval to the planning department as a non-substantial change. Must have interconnections to neighboring parcels via easements on west and east side of parcel and agreements written into deed which allow for the movement across property lines. Site plans must be resubmitted for parcels affected showcasing said connections for vehicular movement. Soil erosion permit required through Manistee County. All parcels to have fire suppression system. Our po- all parcels must have a Knox box on the building for fire department entrance. Um, this is a special use permit valid for two years as determined by planning commission. Signed permits are required through planning department with zoning approval finalized by planning commissioner agreement. Applicant must schedule an appointment when work is completed for zoning administrator approval. And finally, applicant to provide digital CAD files and site plans to planning department as well as surveys to the, um, county register of deeds. Um, the site-specific stipulations, um, were given out, uh, last meeting, and a new plan has been received. Um, two out of the four, um, site-specific stipulations have, well, all four have been, um, addressed on the site plan, though two are awaiting DPW's final review and approval. Um, those site-specific stipulations included curb entrance should be thirty-one feet wide, restricting the driveline along US thirty-one as a one-way to the north. Existing gravel area along the west side of parcel should be paved. And lastly, um, confirm with DPW regarding outlets of catch base in one and catch base in two. Um, those, that as well as restricting the driveline to the north are awaiting DPW's final approval. Um, so that being said, those are site-specific stipulations that should be included on the special use permit. Uh, we just have one correction, uh, turning the survey to equalization, not, uh, to deeds.
Uh, and also, on, on this property, I don't know where there's, where there's a requirement for a connection, if I'm not mistaken.
There would be no.
There's a standalone property, so I don't know why we would have the clause in there, 'cause it, it, it would have to go through the hotel or the.
Because the hotel may redevelop at some point in time, you never know.
So, so this would be a con- on contingent upon, uh, the property next door, but I can't see the.
Not right, the connection would not need to be made right now, but if the easement's in place and if there's a redevelopment of a neighboring property in the future, then it's already set.
The stuff is in place, it's just, it's a just in case.
Just in case, exactly.
So this is conditional on DPW then?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Which ones are the DPW looking at? Say, I know it's gotta be the catch bases, what's the other one?
Water.
And the fourth ones.
Yeah, confirming the driveline along thirty-one, um, going to the north.
Okay, and the catch bases are the other, other one, obviously.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we accept with the, with the provision that, uh, DPW and the, and the owner, uh, come to agreement on those two proposed changes.
Could we make that a non-subjective, uh, so?
Yes.
Or substantial, sorry.
Yeah, non-substantial, through you.
Alright.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, by Mick and a second by Shelley. Any discussion? None? Please take role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Smanzki?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlock?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, public comments and communication. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to, um, come up to the podium, please approach, name and address, please. You have up to five minutes.
Good evening, Trevor Wisnewski, president of Great Lakes Natural Remedies, Inc., uh, the owner of two forty Arthur Street. I just wanna thank you very much for approval. Um, you won't be disappointed. We have great things going on around the state. And the delinquencies that were in our original site plan have all been addressed, uh, pertinent to our conversations with Kyle and his group. And, uh, we are confident that everything will be moving forward, and we thank you again. Oh, one other thing, uh, we have a handshake agreement on securing funding for lot twelve in the industrial area to start growing and processing, so hopefully November, December time, I'll be up here to be able to, uh, pitch you a whole new plan for growing over in the industrial area, so, thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Correspondents? Has there been any correspondents or something?
Correspondents, none.
None? Staff reports?
None.
None tonight?
Okay. Members? Roger, you have anything?
Uh, none.
Marlene? Pam? Robert?
Nope.
Mick?
Uh, the only thing I wanted to, again, for the rest of the, is, uh, at the last council meeting, the, uh, planning commission reported out, thought they did an excellent job reporting out to the, the, uh, city council on, uh, all good works that they've done over the last year.
They tell you that every year, man. We can't do it without you.
That's right. Mutual admiration society, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Breaking your arm on the bedpan.
Thank you for that comment.
Well, I'll have a question if, before you adjourned or did you already? How about that Washington school thing? Has anybody noticed if they started on it?
No.
That project?
Not yet.
No groundbreaking yet, as far as I know.
I thought it was taught, wasn't it supposed to do in September, October, November?
Uh, it's been dependent on receiving grants, I believe.
Oh, is that right? Oh, I thought they all approved. Alrighty.
Yeah, they did receive them.
They did, so it's, it should be coming along soon.
Okay. Mick, do you have anything else? Shelley?
No.
The only thing I have is two ninety-four Twelfth Street, the self-storage unit.
Yeah.
The gate is, um, supposed to be open at seven and close at ten. I went by at eleven-thirty last night, and it was still open, so.
I went by there a couple of odd times and the gate was open. I don't know if it closes.
I'll note that and bring it up with the, with the owner there and discuss that with him, thank you.
Talking about that, Marco, what did it, what would be the thought about throwing a berm around that rather than fencing? I was up there looking, that would help that Krabuski's outfit. I mean, they'd never be able to see it if you put a berm around it.
If you put a berm in, you don't really have a secure area then either.
You don't have what?
You wouldn't have a secure area with a berm, just a berm. And then you get the fencing and then it'll make it more of a secure area.
People gonna climb over or drag over the berm, yeah, well, I'd have thought, yeah, okay.
There we have.
I could just see some of our local young four-by-four people saying.
I don't forget. I suppose anything's possible, yeah, alrighty.
Uh, that's the only thing I had. Um, thank staff for putting everything together tonight, and everybody that sh- came to the meeting, so thank you very much. Um.
Motion to adjourn?
With that, take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
To adjourn. Secondly, Mark, I technically. And so here's one.
Who's kidding?
I don't think it was one of your pictures, though, that's the only thing, like, I, I don't know if it was like a used or, like, I don't know if you keep them and then.
Yeah, we.
Roger?
Literally everything, but, yeah, I don't know. Um, you said it was the city, right?
Yeah.
Then yours is now.
All that, I'd be honest with you. It was during, like, I think, uh, scene, like, I'll have to fire it apart, but it wasn't like the, it wasn't like the Guinness. I don't think, but it was around that timeframe, too.
Okay, yeah, I'm almost to that point, so, I'm almost there.
Alright, and it's, and it's just like, it's really just a favor for a family that moved into the area.
Right, and I have a very scenario that you don't really want to.